Yeah, he messed me up before you started saying fun right this time of year. Okie dokie, ah, chokey.
If I can have your attention please, if you're willing and able, stand for the invocation. Remain standing for the pledge. And I would like to ask our 911 emergency director, Mr. Don Ash, if he would. Thank you, Mr. Ash.
Good morning. Let us pray. Eternal Father God, Lord, we thank you for this opportunity. Another rising of the sun, another opportunity to serve you, God. Lord, we ask you to come in this meeting and be in the midst, God. Guide our minds, our hearts, to do the right thing for the citizens of this county. Lord, be with us as we serve and we serve your will, God. We ask you to bless the commissioners as they work diligently to serve the people of Henry County. In everything we do, God, we give you honor and praises. In Christ Jesus' name, we pray with all thanksgiving. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm showing nine o'clock with the Henry County Board of Commissioners, nine a.m., Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. Meeting come to order. I would like to, uh, thank you. I would like to suggest to the board that we amend the agenda to take off number 16C, which is a City of Starkbridge County Police Agreement that I understand is not ready at this time. So I'd ask the board to amend the agenda to delete that item. Somebody move in that direction. Have a motion District 3?
Second.
Uh, Second District 2, any further discussion? On the favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. I'm also going to explain, if you look at the last sheet, we're going to have executive session, we're going to reconvene, we're going to come out of executive session. Then we're going to convene into Conference Room B for the purpose of a workshop meeting concerning a briefing on the proposed summary budget. Uh, the reason we're going to do that in Conference Room B, if you go look at the layout, it's, uh, tables in a great big U. And that way it allows staff to put all their stuff in the event that this gets lengthy, uh, because it's the new budget coming up and we've got six people up here that's instrumental in this. So in order to give them working space if needed, we're going to have it in Conference Room B. And needless to say, that is open to the public. There would be chairs all around and you can come in and come and go as you please and see that process of it. I visualize it probably ain't going to take no more than fifteen, twenty minutes. That's just me. But, but I've been working on this budget and consultation with the county manager now for like, uh, four or five months, so it's, it's all the same to me. So having said that, uh, we have a proclamation we would like to read today, the National Crime Victims Rights Week. We'll ask our communication director if she'd be so kind as to do this. And if we've got people here representing that, we'll get a picture afterwards. Is that, we've got some people here? Raise your hand. Okay, we'll get a picture afterwards. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. This morning we have a proclamation in recognition of National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016. Whereas Americans are victims of more than 20 million crimes each year, and crime can affect anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, or economic status. And whereas many victims face challenges finding appropriate services, including those victims with special needs or those who are from specific populations. And whereas too many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response systems and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize them and respond to their needs. And whereas the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. And whereas intervening early with services that support and empower victims provides a pathway to recovery from crime and abuse, and serving victims to rebuild their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as their communities. And whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuilds their trust in the criminal justice and social service systems. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 10th through 16th, 2016, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime are offered accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of crime. And whereas the Henry County District Attorney and the Henry County Solicitor General and their offices are dedicated to serving victims, building trust, and restoring hope for justice and healing. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 10th through 16th, 2016 shall be known as National Crime Victims Rights Week in Henry County. And they reaffirm this county's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during this week and throughout the year. And we express our gratitude and appreciation for those who provide services to the victims of crime so that they may find assistance, support, justice, and peace. This fifth day of April 2016. Signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested Stephanie Braun County Clerk.
Thank you. If y'all will come in, we'll have a picture. Okay. Proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Thank you.
Okay. Chairman and Commissioners, this morning we have a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. Whereas on April 11th, 1968, President Lyndon Johnson signed the Civil Rights Act of 1968. And whereas Title 8 of the Act is commonly known as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Fair Housing Act enunciated a national policy prohibiting discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, disability, and familial status. And whereas April 11th, 2016 marks the 48th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the Fair Housing Act remains relevant in 2016 and continues to seek the elimination of discrimination in housing opportunities and to affirm, affirm, affirmatively further fair housing choices for all U.S. residents. And whereas illegal barriers to fair housing opportunities, no matter how subtle, diminish the rights of all. Now therefore be it proclaimed that in the pursuit of the shared goal and responsibility of providing fair housing opportunities for all persons, the Board of Commissioners of Henry County, Georgia hereby join in the national celebration by proclaiming April 2016 as Fair Housing Month and encourages all agencies, institutions, and individuals, public and private, in Henry County, Georgia, to abide by the letter and the spirit of the fair housing law. This fifth day of April 2016. Signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun.
Do we need a picture of somebody out there? Would like a picture, mate? Good. Proclamation recognizing week of April 18th as Made in Henry Manufacturing Appreciation Week.
Commissioners, last one, the proclamation naming the week of April 18th, 2016 as Made in Henry Manufacturing Appreciation Week in Henry County, Georgia. Whereas industry in Henry County is one of the cornerstones in the foundation of our strong diversified economic base. And whereas Henry County's industries continue to contribute to the local quality of life through the creation of quality jobs and the innovation of new products and technologies as well as the community service of our corporations and their employees. And whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners would like to join the Henry County Development Authority in recognizing the pioneering history, resilient spirit, and sustained economic impact of manufacturing and industry in our community. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of April 18th, 2016 shall be known as Made in Henry Manufacturing Week to coincide with the Governor's statewide proclamation of Georgia Manufacturing Appreciation Week. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions these industries, industries have made in our community. This fifth day of April 2016. Signed by Chairman Tommy Smith, attested by County Clerk Stephanie Braun. And we have some people here.
Okay. Very appropriately, we're going to recognize, uh, Mr. Charles Mobley, correction, Charles, Charlie Mosley. I don't see, I don't see Charles, so Jeffrey Cobble will be with you. And we're going to get a update from the Henry County Development Authority. Good morning.
Good morning. How's everybody doing?
So good.
Thank you. It's going to be a big meeting. Uh, thank y'all for having me this morning. I'm going to try not to take too much time. Um, just in an effort to sort of increase the lines of communication between the Development Authority and the Board of Commissioners and to, to bring a little bit of an update to the public and in a formal meeting setting, uh, we asked to come this morning and just give sort of a year-end review and a little bit about what's going on at the Development Authority right now and, and what we hope to see for the coming year. Um, so you guys have, I believe, in your packets, a short presentation. I'll just go through these very quickly. So, uh, as far as business attraction, um, you know, the Development Authority is really focused on, our core mission's very simple. We're just trying to bring new jobs and new investment to Henry County. And we do that through, through the attraction of new companies to the community and also by helping the companies who are here continue to grow and be successful and make sure that the conditions for their growth are good, uh, in Henry County. So we've got a lot of good stuff going on as far as retract, as far as business attraction goes. Um, we have roughly three and a half million square feet of industrial space being built right now in Henry County. Um, some of them are large boxes, uh, some are smaller, uh, manufacturing targeted buildings. Um, but I think the overall trend that we're seeing here, as far as speculative industrial development, uh, we probably have more going on here than any other community in metro Atlanta. And a lot of that has to do with the growth of the Port of Savannah, the continued growth of metro Atlanta's population, uh, and the continued growth of Hartsfield-Jackson. So project activity for last year, um, we worked over, we had over 45 active industrial projects. Um, it's kind of hard to see up there, but the breakdown of that, uh, the bulk of those were in advanced manufacturing and logistics, which, uh, is not surprising. That's sort of what Henry County's always been strong at. Um, we did see a good number of projects that were related to professional services. Uh, and then, as everybody knows, we've got a lot of retail, um, that's been going on. Um, you know, continued retail growth, uh, and the potential for some larger sort of lifestyle center developments, which have been reported on, uh, in the news recently. So we had, um, at the Development Authority, we tracked just over 600 jobs created last year and a little over $175 million in investment to the community. Um, and last year was a little bit of a slow year for us. And, and part of that had to do with me being new and the transition between, um, changing over executive directors of the Development Authority. But we feel like this year, um, we're going to see, we're going to see even more growth. Um, and we've, we've got some exciting announcements on the horizon, um, that will hold until everything's finalized. But hopefully we'll have some press releases in the coming months announcing some big projects. Second slide here, just on existing industry and recruitment. Um, you know, the, the easiest way, and the most efficient way to attract new jobs to the community or to help create new jobs in your community is through businesses who are already here. And they don't make a lot of headlines and it's not as exciting for the newspapers. And, you know, you don't have a big ribbon cutting or a groundbreaking when a, as, like you do when a new company's coming in and creating, you know, a hundred new jobs. But really the, the, the sort of lifeblood of local economies is when a company who's already here is growing and they're creating 15 jobs, 20 jobs. And that's happening with several different companies, you know, all the time in Henry County. And that's where we really see a lot of our job growth. Uh, and also with small businesses as well. But we've got, um, um, our existing industries are doing really well here, uh, for the most part. Um, we've got this year, I think, probably three or four pretty big existing industry expansions that we're going to be able to announce, uh, again, when the timing is right. But we're, we're working with, with local businesses here who are making additional investments into the community, who are going to be creating new jobs for the community. Um, and so that's a big positive for us. So our marketing efforts at the Development Authority are one of the ways that we kind of helped get the word out about what the advantages are of locating in Henry. Um, we have information, uh, on our new website that we rolled out. It's www.choosehenry.com. Um, that was rolled out last year. Uh, and we are in the middle of a multi-year marketing campaign, uh, that's going really well for us so far. You can see some of the statistics up there. I won't go over them, but, um, you know, the marketing effort is really important. A lot of times, um, especially with the way that things have changed with the internet and social media, when companies are interested in go, in coming to a new community, the first thing that they're going to do before they call anybody is they're just going to go online and do some research on you. And they're going to see what kind of articles are being written in the newspaper, what's going on in your community. They're going to go to the Development Authority or whoever the Economic Development Agency in the community's website is. And they're going to poke around for information, see, are you a growing community? Where are you located? What are you close to? What kind of resources do you have? So we've done, I think, a very good job with our website as far as presenting this information. Um, we've had a lot of positive feedback, both from, from prospects, from site selection consultants, from the economic development team at the state, uh, and from people locally in the community who have needed to go on there and find information that can be very helpful. So I encourage you to visit our website if you haven't done so. Um, we're constantly putting, uh, uh, blogs and new information and things like that that are interesting for people in the community. Um, we've also ramped up our social media presence and we're trying to push out a lot of information about the good things going on in Henry County through that as well. But, you know, the other thing on our website that's important is that companies or, or project managers from the state or the utility companies have the ability to come onto our website and search for sites, uh, to see what available sites we have in the community, what available buildings we have in the community, um, you know, what the zoning is on those. They can find all, all kinds of information about different sites. So we link to that tool, uh, through the Development Authority. And, um, but, but the marketing efforts are becoming more and more important as, as everything becomes more digital and companies are doing a lot of homework before they even pick up the phone and reach out to find any information. Um, the other thing that the Development Authority is focused on, obviously, is, is just community relations and larger efforts to, um, you know, to help promote workforce development in the community. Um, we played a, a critical role, um, in the, the development of the Academy for Advanced Studies. That academy is either the largest or, if, if it's not the largest, it's one of the two or three largest, uh, career academies in the entire state. Um, for those of you who haven't had a chance to go through and tour it, it's a phenomenal facility. They've got, um, you know, advanced welding lab space. They've got an incredible mechatronics lab. They've got, um, you know, the newest machines that you're using to diagnose for auto repair. It's, it's a very exciting, um, facility. And, uh, John Esler, who runs that for us, does a tremendous job. So I would encourage you all to, to take a look there, uh, if you haven't had a chance to tour it. Uh, the One Henry Initiative is something that I know, um, has been written about lately and we've gotten some good press on that. And we thank the local, um, papers for, for, for carrying some of those stories to try to get the word out on what we're doing. Um, obviously county staff and, and county commissioners have been involved in these efforts. But One Henry's really kind of a, it's sort of a visioning process for the community where we're coming together and saying, okay, here are the, the outside things that are impacting us with population growth and, you know, challenges along the I-75 corridor, the continued growth of metro Atlanta, um, the continued growth of the Port of Savannah. How, how do all these things line up? And how do we position ourselves for a sustainable kind of growth 20 and 25 years down the road? Um, you know, what kinds of businesses do we have here? What are their needs? What are the kind of businesses that we don't have as many of that we want to attract? What are their needs going to be and trying to anticipate that? So that's a huge effort, um, that we're very proud to, to take, to be taking part of. Um, my chair of the Development Authority Board, Jeff Cobble, who's here with us today, uh, is a co-chair of the One Henry Effort. So the Development Authority, uh, in partnership with the Chamber and several other organizations in the community are very plugged into this. Um, and then finally, it's just kind of a graphic of what's going on here. And these are things that I've mentioned, but, you know, Henry County's population is projected to grow by 96 to 98 percent, depending on what numbers you look at, over the next 20, 25 years. So we're looking at almost a doubling of the population if those estimates are correct. Either way, there's going to be significant population growth here. Um, you know, the feasibility study that this community worked on, uh, last year for a new interchange is now at the federal level. And our, uh, local Department of Transportation and GDOT are continuing to work on those together. Um, the port is being deepened. That's going to mean more containers and more trucks. Uh, Hartsfield-Jackson is growing. Uh, we've got the Managed Lane Project coming online, all the spec development that I mentioned earlier on the first slide. So Henry County is a growing community and the Development Authority is here to try to make sure that the growth happens in the way that the community wants it to happen and also that we're bringing in quality jobs and quality investment to the community. So, um, I've, I've talked longer than I had intended to, but I'll, I'll stop now and kind of open it up for questions, uh, if there are any from the commission, uh, or I'd be happy to just sit down and be quiet.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Charlie, I was just going to tell you, I mean visually I like this. Because I mean, if you had somebody in today's modern society, it seems like attention spans because there's so many distractions going on. This kind of caters to it all. If you wanted to just have a snapshot, so where, if you went, if you came to our website, how hard is it to find this snapshot? Is it pretty, pretty front and center?
Honestly, honestly, the, those images are, are kind of littered throughout our website. Um, so I'll, I'll give credit to a couple of people. Number one, a lot of the images up here and sort of the clean look of all of that was developed with the marketing agency that we hired as part of our large multi-year marketing effort. Uh, but also Leah Brown, who's our Director of Existing Industry and Marketing, who's also here today, is the one who put this together. And she really put the entire presentation together, which I think looks pretty phenomenal. I would agree with you, Commissioner Preston. But yeah, a lot of this information is there. Um, visually, this is what our website looks like. Um, we've got these icons. Um, the digital ad campaign that we're running where, you know, if you're searching something related to economic development on Google, uh, you're going to get served up, uh, a banner ad that, that's got these similar, you know, but related to, to, to our different target industries. So you'll get served up one for healthcare, you'll get served up one for advanced manufacturing. And they all look like this and they've got that kind of clean, very attractive, modern sort of look to them, so.
That's good. I only have a couple of comments. Number one, I look at the 26 and beyond. I see the new interchange, I see the port, and I see the managed lanes. Uh, the new interchange, uh, is somewhere between Bethlehem and 155. The purpose of that is, is to, somewhere down the road, is to take these 18-wheelers off of the road, off our secondary roads. Uh, I look at the port, uh, I've been to several, uh, briefings about the port in Savannah. And as we well know, they digging it deeper to accommodate bigger cargo ships. That means more. And because of that, uh, right now, the Georgia Department of, um, Transportation is now contemplating a $2 billion extra lane from Macon, which is Interstate 16th, to McDonough exclusively for trucks. Uh, so I don't know, that's, that's obviously beyond. But, uh, the managed lanes is, um, uh, fixing to get online probably in about eight or nine, 10 months. So we'll see how that works out.
That's right. Yeah, those are supposed to come online, I think, beginning of next year.
Come on board, I appreciate everything you've done.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to work with all of you and, um, and I appreciate this, this board's support of the Development Authority in trying to help make sure that we've got all the resources that we need to help bring new businesses here.
I yield the floor to District 1.
Good morning.
On the interchange, we, uh, feasibility, feasibility study's done. It's gone to the state, correct?
Correct.
So what process do we?
It's actually gone, it's, it's gone through the state, uh, initial process and is going to the federal level now. So there are a series of studies and justification reviews that have to take place at the federal level. That's typically a multi-year process. Um, and, and essentially what we did, if you remember last year, um, when we did the feasibility study, it showed several alternatives. And really our feasibility study was looking conceptually if there was, if, if it was feasible to add an interchange somewhere between exit 216 and exit 212. So as it moves through the federal process, the scope of that will become a lot narrower and conceptual designs will start to emerge around where exactly the interchange will go, what it'll look like, how it'll be designed. Um, and then of course you've got, you know, the other things that add on to that timeframe, environmental, it's right-of-way acquisition, and then construction and funding of the project. So it's, it's a while away, but I know, um, I was actually talking with Wade before this meeting started and, and, and his, his group is, is very much engaged with what's going on, uh, at the federal level. Um, and they do a great job. So they're monitoring that and working with those folks to get them the information they need to keep the ball rolling. And, and we're continuing to work through our state legislative delegation, through our congressional delegation, uh, at the federal level to make sure that this is on everybody's radar, make sure that we've got broad-based support so that when the time comes, uh, for funding, um, you know, we're going to hopefully have that support in place. And it's not going to be something that we're bringing to them the day before, but that they've been hearing about for the last several years. So they probably will be very sick of hearing of, from us by the time it gets done, but that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner have any comments?
Charlie, I, I want to, uh, thank you and, uh, the Development Board for everything you're doing. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of good things coming to Henry County. And I know y'all work very hard and I'm just looking forward to some of these announcements you're going to be making in the future. But thank you.
So am I. Thank you. I appreciate it, Commissioner.
Any other comments? For the Commissioners? If not, I yield the floor to the county manager.
Commissioners, I'd be remiss if I didn't brag a little bit on the Development Authority. As you know, that we've developed a, what I'm calling a threshold evaluation team with the internal an internal group that considers the kinds of development that would just been presented to Henry County. We think is going more of them will be coming. So I reached out to Charlie and make sure he could join us in those two endeavors and he was able to turn on a dime and come back with us, meet with the developers and see what the other alternatives are that we can assemble with our partners for development in Henry County. So my hat's off and much appreciative, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Charlie.
Thank you.
Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, etc. That are not listed on the agenda, then is portioned to be in all persons which you speak. For public comments, must sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. You must complete the public comments. Speak or form or you will not be recognized. You'll be able to address the Board for five minutes and I take these as they make an application to fill the form out. So the first one we recognize is D. Carley. You have the floor for five minutes if you want to speak. I repeat, D., maybe I'm not pronouncing that right. C.A.R.L. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You've got five minutes. State your name for the record, please.
My name is D. Carley and I'm a member of the Patrick Henry Board of Review. I also want to speak, I want to speak about one of the Henry County Board of Commissioners' corporate creation, the Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation. This is an entity that has or had this Commission's chairman, Tommy Smith, as CEO, Finance Director Fred Audilet as CFO, and Chairman's, Chairman Smith's secretary, Stephanie Braun, as its secretary. We've been advised that recently all three have vacated their positions, but the corporation remains only with the county attorney, Patrick D. Jogstetter, now on the corporate documents on file with the Secretary of State. This corporation was created and kept off the public radar. Contracts have been entered into on this entity by its Board of Directors and this Board of Commissioners. This is a clear conflict of interest since those working for Henry County cannot serve two masters. Whether elected, hired, or appointed to county positions, the people of this county deserve public servants and have not authorized any county employee to use their position at this Commission building to do anything other than county business. This corporation is yet another example of how money from the public coffers gets moved into the private sector with ease and secrecy. You gentlemen, whether profiting for yourselves, your family, or your friends, have undermined the trust of the people and as corporate Board members, whether past or present, have violated your fiduciary responsibilities by and through your involvement with this corporation. The people elect representatives, not company Board members, and this duality is rampant throughout Henry County. We have found reason to believe none of the elected positions within this county are occupied by public servants. Instead, what we have is the fictional creation of your esquire attorneys in control of this and every other aspect of Henry County government. There remains the straightforward question that you and the people must now decide. Are we to have the republic as guaranteed to us in our contract with you? You swore allegiance and support for the constitutions of the United States and Georgia. This is the only contract we have to ensure that our elected are public servants and not tyrannical masters. The way money is mishandled at the people's expense, along with the consistent violations to the oath of office by this Board, must now be reversed. Step down, gentlemen, and let the people proceed to have interim elections so that they can sleep at night knowing that those who decide on public service will know that is what we will get. And while you're at it, please take with you the team of esquires you have advised, who have advised you in such a criminal manner. Get your advice from the people you serve instead of the criminals who teach you how to circumvent the law of the land.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Charles Pemberton?
Good morning. State your name for the record, please, at the podium.
Good morning. That was Charles Pemberton. As Pemberton plays. Again, my name is Charles Pemberton. I'm a member of the Patrick Henry Board of Review. My colleagues and I have been looking at the various corporations created by the Henry County, by Henry County, and I would like to speak on one of them. The County Government, Governmental Finance Corporation, Mr. Swinson has talked about with Fred Alletta about this entity and was told it was established because the banks were not able to deal with the Board of Commissioners, that they needed a corporation to complete any long-term financial agreements. Now, two things come to mind. First, contracts that are beyond a year are not permitted to be entered into by this Board. And second, this corporation has been formed to circumvent Georgia Code. A clever little sleight of hand that the public was never aware of existed nor why. This flies in the face of legal, moral, and ethical face of the county by allowing you sirs, just like Commissioners before you, to burden the county with long-term debt in order to balance the county's finances while securing funds to push through a laundry list of details that profit not the county, but the people involved in such deals. This also opened up Pandora's Box full of potential corrupt backroom dealings, which remains anybody's guess as to how, when, where such deals are even finalized. Now perhaps you can accept the many run-in runs on Georgia Code because you are being led by your county attorney, or shall I call him esquire, staff. But the bottom line is ignorance is no excuse. It's just no excuse. You're not permitted to delegate such authority to them. By doing so remains a constant state of violating your oath of office. These ongoing violations, along with those relating to the other corporate entities, are being brought to the attention of the Henry County Corporate Sheriff, the GBI, Sam Olson, and the FBI for further investigation regardless of whether or not the aforementioned corporation agencies take the requisite action. The Patrick Henry Board of Review will continue to press for law and swift justice for the people of Henry County. It is these shadow corporations that have allowed for the pelfering of the county's financial coffers, making this Board just another in a long and storied procession of corrupt leadership. It is now the position of the Patrick Henry Board of Review that this entire municipal Board be fired since they have spent their time in office as corporate executives and not constitutional representatives of the people they were elected to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll recognize Mr. Steve Cash from the Director of the Quality Growth Council. State your name for the record, please.
Steve Cash, Executive Director for the Henry Council for Quality Growth, resides at 2024 Flat Rock Road in Stopbridge, Georgia. Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, a dedicated and able, committed staff. I really appreciate y'all, the hard work you do. I know what you're doing and we appreciate it from the Henry Council for Quality Growth. First of all, I want to give you as Commissioners and Mr. Chair, an update and the public, an update on what's happened with Leader in Me. This is a press release that went out last month. Stopbridge, Georgia, February 11th, 2016. Cotton Indian Elementary School recently presented their first annual the Leader in Me kickoff night for the 2015-2016 school year. Over 1,000 students, teachers, administrators, parents, family, and friends came out to support the fun-filled event. The night consisted of fun, Leader in Me activities, kindergarten through fifth grade, student performances, snacks, and informations about the Leader in Me experience. The Henry Council for Quality Growth and Henry County Board of Education has collaborated and selected Cotton Indian Elementary as the first school in Henry County to implement the Leader in Me initiative. The Leader in Me process is based on the bestselling personal development book Franklin Covey's Seven Habits of Highly Effective People. Cotton Indian Elementary has developed a three-year plan for the Leader in Me process. This year, this year, we are working on changing the environment and language, says Misty Quattlebaum, Chairperson of the Lighthouse Team. Each teacher adopts one of the seven habits weekly, implements it daily during lead time, a designated time during the class for Leader in Me. The seven habits were the running theme on Thursday night. The students of Cotton Indian Elementary closed the event through song singing about the seven habits. And the seven habits are be proactive, begin with and in mind, put first things first, think win-win, seek first to be understood, then seek first to understand, then to be understood, synergize and sharpen the saw, all while wearing colorful T-shirts that read Keep Calm, Lead On. The Henry Council for Quality Growth is located in McDonough, Georgia, and is a broad-based membership organization committed to helping Henry County become a better place to live, learn, work, play, and do business both now and for years to come. Now, one of the things that probably Charlie Mosley was referring to and Leah knows also, what are one of the basic things that potential companies, corporations look at before they come to Henry County? Is it education? It is education. It's number one. And at best, our education, and I don't want to take anything away from our Board of Education and our school system, but isn't mediocre at this time. So Henry Council for Quality Growth saw something that can make a change, make a change for the better. For people that are coming in can see, hey, Henry County Board of, Henry County Board of Education, through the Henry Council for Quality Growth, they've adopted a process, the Leader in Me, through Franklin Covey. And ladies and gentlemen, I would be remiss to say that this is already working at Cotton Indian Elementary School. After two months, it's working. And we are so excited about putting this process in future schools in Henry County. This is going to happen. However, we're in the middle of a fundraiser for the pilot school. We went to the Board of Education and said, hey, we will pay for this if you'll choose a pilot school, Cotton Indian Elementary in North Henry, to process this through and to see what Leader in Me can do for that district and see what it can do for the county. We are having a fundraiser on April the 13th, on a Friday, Friday the 13th, and it's Clay's for Quality. It's a sporting clay's tournament to raise funds for the Leader in Me. If you are interested in doing this, go to our website at henrycouncilforqualitygrowth.com and you'll see all the particulars on this. We do need teams of four. We do need sponsors. We need to raise $40,000 at this event. So if you're interested, I have packets here today and then again, you can go to our website. And again, I want to mention next Wednesday at our April 13th luncheon and speaker series, we're having the Georgia Attorney General, Mr. Sam Olens, will come and speak to us. This is being sponsored by the Kinsey Grace Foundation. So if you want to hear from the Georgia Trend Magazine, Georgia of the Year, Georgian of the Year, Sam Olens, comment and make a reservation through our website, henrycouncilforqualitygrowth.com. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner.
Thank you. Request to address the Board from Commissioners from Mr. Bill Tony. You get 15 minutes to come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
Bill Tony, McDonough. I'd like to check with Mr. Moss. We were talking, meeting before last, that about our police precinct, if we could build it for $2 million. Can we do it? Have you checked in on it? I've called past Commissioner Reed Bowman. He builds a lot of the buildings in the county and I've called him twice and he don't, he don't call back. But anyway, I don't know if any of y'all are aware of what happened to me last week, but not very good thing. We have swapped a police precinct for a water park. My car was sitting in my driveway Thursday night and I got the window shot out of it. Now, whether you know anything about it or not, you know, I don't know. It's not good. Last meeting that I was here and I got up and spoke, I was verbally assaulted outside the building down here. All these people are doing, if they're attacking me for getting up here and speaking for the people of the county, they're doing nothing but pissing me off, to be honest with you. Now, whether anybody here's got anything to do with it or not, I don't have any idea. But I tell you what, there will be a list of names and maybe some of y'all's names will be on this list, will be my attorney if anything does happen to me. And I want y'all to really think about that. All the, you know, you can't penalize people for getting up here, taxpayers, and you can't assault them and you can't, you can't do things like that. Now, the guy that assaulted me verbally outside here was part of the management team at Cotton Fields. He didn't want to know what I had to say. And he's, you know, he's saying that my stuff is not correct. Well, let me say this. Everything I get, I get from the county. My numbers from the county are supposed to be spot on. That's what we pay all these folks for. Well, according to what they're that y'all hadn't paid them in seven months. They're $17,000 a month. I've checked with county attorney, I mean, the county manager, and it's absolutely true. Does this county, and I know Mr. Cash, he wants to be the shining star here and, you know, and bringing everybody to the county, but we got to get our affairs in order. You don't go making deals with people, even if it's a bad deal, and not pay your debts. We don't want to be known for not paying our debts. Now, this $119,000 that we owe these people, from what I understand, will be coming out of general funds. Is that correct? You can nod or whatever. So, you know, I know that, I'm not going, I'm not going to take up any more than 15 minutes if any of y'all want to speak to me. We need to get our county in line. This has been, and I'm being straight up with you, y'all about the most do-nothing board I've ever seen. I don't know that, you know, if you're waiting for somebody to call and tell you how to vote, I don't know what the deal is. Y'all are not getting anything done. I've asked to take a look at all these records and everything else and it all falls on deaf ears. Now, I get up here and I speak up and I do my research and everything. I get shot at, my car gets shot, my, I get jumped out here in the parking lot. Now, this isn't right. I have a First Amendment, but I also have a Second Amendment right. And I will, I will exercise both. And I'm being straight up with you on that. Now, getting up here and speaking to y'all, I think as a taxpaying citizen, in this county, I pay taxes on seven houses. And I have every right to get up here and speak as anybody does. I believe in doing the right thing. Now, getting back to this golf course. This seems to, this seems to fire everybody up, you know, but that's, that is the truth. It is a money pit. And the citizens, when they wake up and look at how much this thing is costing people, it's amazing. And it's still costing us money. It's going to cost us money years to come. Mr. Barham made a comment that as long as he's sitting there, that we're not going to sell that thing and lose any money. Well, let me tell you something. You'll be dead and gone a long time from now before that, that ever gets sold and make any money. In business world, I know you've ne, I don't think you've ever been in business. I'm not going to say you wasn't. But I'm going to say that I, the, your philosophy in business, you'll go broke. This is putting good money after bad. This is not the way you do good business. Sometimes you have to cut your losses and move on down the road. Now, we hadn't even tried to sell it. We hadn't tried to do anything with that golf course. We can't shut it. We can't do anything. It just keeps sucking the county dry. Our taxpaying dollars just keep on going with it. And this right here, knowing that we still owe these people, well, the guy out in the street, or the guy in the parking lot told me, said this wasn't all of it. They also owe another $130,000. So y'all owe them over $300,000. Now logically, I get to thinking, what company would be involved in something not getting paid? Let me tell you, if y'all owed me $300,000, we'd be in court. I would sue you. I would sue you. You know, if you owe me the money legally, then I'm telling you, I'd be in court with you trying to get my money. Not still doing it, it doesn't make sense to me. Now, the people responsible for that golf course, again, it wasn't y'all, but I tell you what I'd like to do, I'd like to introduce y'all and the public to who it was. Your chairman, Cottonfields Golf Course, when they bought it, Jason Harper. District Three, Randy Stamey. District Four, Reed Bowman. District Five, Johnny Bezler. I'd like for the public to know the name and the face of the people that were responsible with this whole thing, how it got started. Again, you've got six people up here to try to straighten it out. Every one of you guys, I've talked to about this before you were elected, pretty much, and then most after you were elected. Now, when we go back to this right here, we need to shut it down, get rid of it, that's when you need your development authority to get involved in how to get rid of this thing and how to put businesses on that property instead of us losing our shirt on it. That's where I think people like Mr. Cash over here and the Development Authority, this is what we need to be working toward, getting people in here so we can get a tax base coming out of there to where it starts paying for itself. If you go with Mr. Barham's idea, you'll end up in bankruptcy on that thing, I'm telling you, because it's just a lost cause, you've got to cut your losses and get on down the road. Now, in my business, I don't make perfect buys every time when I buy golf carts. Some of them, I might lose money on, but I'm not going to sit there and look at them until one day miraculously they go up in value and I get to keep it. Last, I'd like to, I'd like to, again, talk to, reference Mr. Cash again, and we're up here to bring people into the county. We talk about-
You need to keep it to county issues-
Okay, I'm sorry.
-in this board. He is not affiliated with any of this.
Well, our Development Authority.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, he's not government.
Excuse me. But when you, when you got something like this golf course second you drive, and it's eating up money that you can't be using for the police department. My car got shot Thursday night. Friday morning, my wife went out to get in it. All right? She called me, she said, you know, the window's busted out of the car. So I told her, I said, call 911, I'm on my way. I passed a police officer on my way home. I get home, two hours later, I have a police officer to show up. I called twice because I figured something might have happened. Now, two hours to get a police officer to my house, that's ridiculous. So I asked the police officer when he got there, I said, what's the deal? How come it took y'all so long? Well, he said, well, there's only one police officer, and I got sidetracked three times on the way up here. Do you think I wanted to hear that? Let me tell you, and I think, Mr. Prince, I think you work with the police a good bit. Do you think there's enough police officers out there?
No.
Do you think that some of this wasted money that we're wasting on bull like this, we could be hiring more police officers? Don't you think about how many police officers we could get with the money we're losing on Cottonfields? It's ridiculous. We've got to get it in here. You're not going to get businesses in here or anything else when you've got crime rate going up, and you, you know, you get, you window shot out of your car, and it takes two hours to get a police officer to your house. This is ridiculous. It's ludicrous. Now, I don't know what's going on in the police department. I don't even know if it was like, that's Bill Tony, get it when you can. I don't know anything about that. I know that I'm standing there in my driveway for two hours waiting on a police officer to get there. I get a police officer to come, and I get another one to apologize. I had two in my driveway, one apologizing and one, now, to be honest with you, I'm used to somebody asking me questions about filling out a report. That sound normal? He hands me a piece of paper and says, fill it out, and give a brief description on what happened. To me, we've got issues here. And let me tell you, anytime you swap a park, a water park, for a police precinct, it's ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous. Now, you need to be rethinking, all y'all need to be thinking, rethinking. And Mr. Moss, you can speak up if you want to, but I tell you what, I think that you were totally off track when you said, you know, you're willing to give up a precinct for a park. I kind of have to be with that lady that stood here the last meeting, and I'd have to say no to both, because I don't think you're getting it done. I think this is probably one of the weakest boards I've ever seen, it's a do-nothing board. And then we got Mr. Preston, he's taking his shift to Tennessee with his, leaving a destruction behind on his part, and I'm totally being honest with everybody. And Mr. Preston, you need to get Rick Jeffries off the waterboard. We met with attorneys at the State Capitol, and they said it was a conflict of interest. At least do the right thing before you leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we recognize Mr. Carl Swenson. He has 15 minutes to come to the podium, state your name, please.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm Carl Swenson, and I live in Stockbridge, the unincorporated part. I'm here to give a bit of a gift to everybody, including all of you in the audience, by showing you something that has been hidden from us, not by the county, but by the U.S. I recently ran across a bit of information concerning how to mail first-class postage or first-class letters for two cents per half ounce. Did a little research on that, and although there was maybe one or two negative comments on the Internet, I decided to test it out for myself. And what I found is that it works. I've mailed stuff all over. As a matter of fact, I mailed each and every one of you an envelope, and I assume that you all got yours, because Chairman Smith, you responded, thank you very much. But this is important because it shows that there's something more than just what people perceive as the USPS. There's something called the General Post Office. Is anybody aware that that's existing? Probably not, but it does, and it hasn't been eliminated. It's been there since the 37th Congress of the United States of America, and we can invoke that anytime we choose. Now, what would be the benefit of doing this? The benefit would be that come Christmas, come any holiday, that you would like to send your mail out to the loved ones, you can do so for two cents a copy. That opens up a whole new arena, because most people are now using the Internet and they're trying to eliminate using the post office as much as possible, except for packages and whatnot. But let me tell you, the post office, the general post office, is the only secure means of communication we have left, the only one. Because the NSA monitors everything that we have going on, everything. Facebook, YouTube, email, everything. But they cannot and do not monitor this. There's a form that you have to use, a format, rather, that you have to use in order to invoke this. You cannot use zip codes, you cannot abbreviate, and you must cite the law in question. It's a pretty simple outline. Now, anybody who's interested, if you want to know how to use this information, folks, please, I have some examples here, and you can always contact me to do this. So this is something that we all, you as individuals, not as commissioners, but as individuals, should be using, should be taken advantage of, because it's there. It's there for us, and it is funded by the federal government, not local government, and is funded by the General Post Office, which is an agency of the federal government. And it's important to know that the USPS was created as a, what Nixon called a quasi-private-public That is to say that he created a corporation without any authority to do so, I might add. Kind of leads me around to what we see here, because I don't know that the commissioners have any authority to create, if they had anything to do with creating these corporations or not, but, you know, these are quasi-legitimate, not totally legitimate. But I've sent these to New York, I've sent these to you, I've sent this to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I've sent it to friends. I would caution anybody that uses this not to do so for commercial purposes, strictly for personal correspondence. But you can get a lot of mileage out of this, and if you will continue to check it out and look at the information that I have provided, and gentlemen, I'd like to give you a copy And what does this all mean? Why are we paying 49 cents for first-class postage when they can only charge us, or they should only charge us two cents? Because the government of the United States decided in their best interest that they wanted to create another corporation. The government of the United States is a corporation. It's called the United States Incorporated, and it resides at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue. Gentlemen, just look it up. There's another corporation up there called the United States of America Incorporated that resides at 1500 Pennsylvania Avenue. And things have been coming to light lately that are showing that their control over all of us and you guys is intense. But they have no business here, just like the post office has no business charging us 49 cents if we use the post office the way it's supposed to be used, just like we need to use you, the way you're meant to be used as public servants. We have them at every level of this thing we call government. And only because we have fallen asleep, we, the people, have fallen asleep, do we not realize what is available to us as in the forms of redress, in the forms of good governance? Now, you heard the Patrick Henry Board of Review people get up here and talk about the corporations, and you heard Mr. Tony, oh, he's gone, you heard Mr. Tony talk about the golf course. It's my understanding that the Henry County Office Industrial Park Corporation is the one that's charged with handling that stuff. None of that's real. What's real is that the people we elect are here to manage and handle the public business, not to create shadow corporations like Tricky Dicky did back in 1971 when he created the USPS. How many other corporations can you think of that the federal government has created, that the state government has created, or that this group right here before me has created? And for what purpose? Is it necessary? Is it necessary to know that you're charged with making contracts that only last, huh, a year? And is that the reason why these corporations are being put together so that you can circumvent that law and enter into contracts that go beyond a year? Sure looks that way. Sure looks that way. But getting back to the matter at hand, I hope that the people who see this, and there will be many, because this gets out to the world, understand that this is not a game, it's not a trick. These things exist in reality. This duality exists in reality, we see it every day. You've heard me talk to these items here, and many times I get the blank stares, I sometimes can understand that, because not too many people have taken the time to learn, just like not many have taken the time to learn that they could be saving 47 cents per stamp. How many other types of savings to the people of this county could this board be doing right now? By eliminating the overhead that is these shadow corporations? We know that government by itself is inefficient. They do the best they can, but inefficient, at best. At worst, it can be criminal. How that applies to the post office, I can't really tell you, but I can tell you that this is a perfect example, a perfect example, of the duality that we are living with right now. You have a general post office working hand in hand with the USPS, and all we know is that it's the USPS. How many of you out here know of the general post office? How many of you know that there's two general post offices? One for you guys, that you could be taking advantage of, if you will take the time to learn this? I think it's three cents a stamp for the government. How much mailing do you guys do? Quite a bit. If you looked at how that is done, maybe, just maybe, you could save the people of this county a whole heap of money, just like by getting rid of this albatross they call the Cottonfields Golf Course. Gentlemen, all I'm here to try and show is that we are all dealing with shadow corporations, shadow government, in the form of this dual system that has no business in a constitutional republic. You guys take an oath, and I know, I know Tommy takes it seriously, I know you do. I don't know about the rest of you. I don't know about the rest of you, but we take it seriously. That's the only contract we have with you, because you are there to look out for our rights, to ensure that our rights are protected. We don't get any from the Constitution, we get them from God, and it's your job to protect them. So, keep in mind that you are supposed to be providing us a republican form of government, that's your charge, and part of that is a separation of powers. Separation of powers is very important to all of us. Keep that in mind as you go through your, uh, final stages of your, uh, of your, uh, office here. And, uh, keep in mind that people are looking all the time. And please, please, take a look at this stuff and see if you can use this to save some money for the people of Henry County. Think of it in terms of doing your public service. It's not just a business, it's the people, and we need you to work for us. That's all I have to say.
Consent agenda, the following items shall be considered on the consent agenda before voting on the consent agenda, the chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete any of the items. Only have one item, juvenile court resolution question authorization to apply for a grant for state of Georgia Office of the Government Criminal Justice Coordination Council for the fiscal year twenty-seventeen to fund evidence-based programs. Anybody want to add to or delete from the consent agenda? If not, somebody move in that direction to accept this consent agenda. Move to approve. Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Three, any further discussion, honor favor raise your right hand, so move. Purchasing, resolution awarding a bid for mulch, annual contract. Good evening, correction, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The first item I have is a request to award an annual contract for a bid for mulch for the various counties landscaping needs. We were, we received four bids, the recommendation is to award this annual contract to Lanier Plans Incorporated, DBA Corcat of Carrollton, Georgia, with the lowest overall bid. The award is for a unit-priced contract with a one-year agreement and two mutually agreed-upon renewals that can be authorized, that can be executed by the purchasing director. Materials will be ordered as required and approved. Funding for this commodity is available in the department's budgets that require the mulch.
Anybody have any comments or questions? If not, have, uh, somebody move, we approve the resolution as read.
So move.
Have a motion?
So move.
Second District, uh, I'm gonna say three. Any further discussion, honor favor raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid for pest control services, annual contract.
Yes, sir, thank you. This item is a bid for an annual contract for pest control services. We received five bids, inspectors pest control of Conyers, Georgia submitted the lowest overall bid. The recommendation is to award this contractor inspector's pest control for a one-year term with two mutually agreed-upon renewals that can be authorized and executed by the purchasing director. Materials will be ordered as required and approved. Funding for these services are available in the department's budgets.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Somebody move, the resolution is just read.
So move.
Have a motion District One? Second. Second District Four, any further discussion, honor favor raise your right hand, all opposed, I'm voting yes, all opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll incorporate a public hearing, resolution question abandonment and declare surplus a portion of public road known as Medline Place. Mr. Wade Stroud, entering, DOT Director, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Request is to abandon a portion of Medline Place, also shown on the attached platemark Exhibit A. Section of roadway requested to be abandoned is the area east of a tributary to Bethlehem Bottoms and contains the existing Medline Place cul-de-sac. Medline is in the process of constructing a distribution center east of the area proposed to be abandoned. Due to the site's driveway grades, in conjunction with the need for a guard shack for security concerning access to the site, Medline has made a request to the county about using the existing east end of Medline Place for its guard shack location. It has been determined that abandonment of the roadway is necessary in regards to this request. Subsequent to the board's decision, if the abandonment is approved, the abandonment slash closing of the roadway is contingent upon the developer-owner placing a new cul-de-sac west of the proposed abandonment area and dedicating that cul-de-sac and required right-of-way to the county for public turnaround purposes. This abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald on March twenty-third and March thirtieth of two thousand and sixteen. All property owners having frontage along Medline Place have been notified by certified mail. It's also important to note that, as Mr. Mosley alluded to earlier, due to the interchange feasibility report, Bethlehem Bottoms is a potential target connector for this new interchange. The county is not recommending selling the right-of-way to Medline at this time, we would like to maintain ownership of it, uh, in conjunction with the findings of that interchange feasibility report, and council will be working out a long-term agreement, uh, to that end if this board does choose to abandon this portion of, uh, Medline Place. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions or comment from the board? Yes, sir, District Two.
Wade, I appreciate you, you worked me back across, but I just want to make sure I clarify that this will not have an impact on the interchange whatsoever.
No, sir, as, as part of that inter, that interchange feasibility report, they did look at our future land use considerations, and they understand what type of product this is, and every alignment that I've seen goes around the proposed development and comes in along the creek, so it would not have any impact on that.
Any other questions or comment? If not, I'll open the floor up for ten minutes, anybody like to come to the podium, state your name for the record, and speak yea or nay, or just make comments on this, uh, proposed I say again, it's open for public comments. Hearing none, seeing none. I declare the, uh, public hearing portion has been adhered to, the requirement has been met, so we have a, uh, resolution in the book, does somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
We have a motion District Two?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, honor favor raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorize the purchase of one used two-zero-one-one Road Tech X-R-Y, correction, X-ray, I can say that, but I can't say the X. Five-hundred dash four coal planer milling machine and a budget transfer from salary savings to Henry County dot equipment. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, yeah. I've been called worse than that, I promise you. Uh, the Henry County Department of Transportation is need in replacing our existing Road Tech milling machine, asset number seven-five-eight-two. It's a two-thousand model, uh, it has approximately seven-thousand sixty-eight hours of service life, uh, and the reason we say approximate is the hour meter has had to be replaced on that unit, so we're not quite sure exactly how many hours it has, but this is our best guess. Um, the, uh, there are some repair costs that need to be, uh, associated with our existing unit, uh, for the drum and having the engine replaced, that's estimated to be roughly a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We feel based off this information, the machine has reached the end of its service life and is no longer economically feasible to keep in our fleet. Uh, we've located a replacement milling machine, it's a used two-thousand-eleven Road Tech RX five-hundred dash four coal planer, better known as a milling machine with just under thirty-four-hundred hours of, uh, service life. Uh, this was used by a local government, so it has not been in constant production, uh, for a paving crew. Uh, Road Tech has also reconditioned all the engine and parts on the unit, we've inspected it and feel like it is a high-quality unit, and comes at a substantial savings to us. A brand-new milling machine of this type, uh, costs about five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, uh, so this signifies a substantial savings for us and helps us achieve replacing the piece of equipment, uh, that needs to be replaced. Uh, Road Tech is also going to give us a trade-in value of twenty-thousand dollars for our existing unit. Uh, the total price of the two-thousand-eleven Road Tech coal planer RX dash five-hundred dash four, serial number two-thirty-four, is two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and funds are available in salary savings. A budget amendment will be necessary to move funds from salary savings to Henry County Department of Transportation equipment account for this purchase. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody got any questions? Comments? If not, somebody move to approve the resolution as read.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, honor favor raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution approving and adopting the Henry County Employee Benefit Medical Insurance Plan, County Manager. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, the Chairman. Today, we are required to start looking at the insurance benefits that the county provides in participation with the employees for our medical, our dental, our visual, life and health insurances. Um, at our last meeting, I told you we had to have a decision today on it. I want to give you a couple of the highlights that have caused us to get to where we're at today. Obviously, when the initial bids came back in, we had some sticker shock on a few things. We expected it to increase, but I didn't expect it to be what it turned out to be, so therefore we, uh, started negotiating and looking at other alternatives that we could come up with that would lower our costs and provide a similar, uh, and very close to being similar coverages that our employees deserve. Um, in doing so, we've ended up with a couple of options that I need the, the board to consider today, and the reason it becomes important today is that we are facing a couple of short fuses, as has been the process here for a number of years and just about every other local government I've been at, where we get our numbers and what our cost will be for the services, and we have to make several decisions in a compressed time that really affects next year's budget. So in such, uh, one of the first things we did when we started looking at additional, uh, coverages and what the, what we'd want from our carrier, uh, we said we didn't want to change any doctors. That was one of the things that was made clear to me by staff. We also needed to work with a group that could give us some alternatives relative to what our administrative costs would be, and in this current proposal, you'll see that we've eliminated two plans and moved persons that were in those two plans up or back in accordance with, uh, the closest we could get to the curve, coverage they were currently enjoying. And essentially, there's a couple of pieces of this that really does need to be pointed out, and it's what is highlighted up there. You know, the plan, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, is Plan Two Option, the employees are selected and their options, it is going to increase their out-of-pocket expenses. Uh, however, we think we've got a better coverage and lower premium costs for the most part going across all the plans. So today, I've got the, the brokers here, it's an illustrious crowd back in Fourth Road, and today I need you to do three things, uh, four things, actually. I want you to select a carrier, and we're recommending Blue Cross Blue Shield. I want y'all to select the benefit level coverages, the two, um, coverages we're recommending that are in the authorization of the, uh, resolution, and I want the board to decide on what the board's contribution would be, uh, for the additional cost, premium costs for the insurance. When we first got our plan, it was one-point-eight million dollars, and in the resolution, you have the alternative of just pay nothing, twenty-five percent, fifty percent, seventy-five percent, or a hundred. Under the current plan, we have in front of you, it's five-hundred and I believe nineteen-thousand dollars, and so the contribution we'd be asking for would be the same percentages I just stated, zero, twenty-five, fifty, seventy-five, and a hundred percent. And then the approval of the continuation, the provider of our life insurance, uh, and other disability coverages, which is Cigna currently. So we've had some discounts, and we've got a plan in front of you that represents, um, a very good insurance plan that's still quite rich in, in many ways, um, but it's the best we can do for the money we've got right now, and we think it provides adequate coverage and a good insurance plan for your employees. If you have any questions for me, I'm here, and I do have the brokers who were, um, instrumental in putting this package together. Yes, sir.
Out-of-pocket costs for the employees, can you, um, go into more detail about that?
I can. I'm gonna have Mr. Miller come in and talk about the details of any one of them, I don't want to try to read my glasses and give you anything exactly. And Commissioners, this is a static document, we made changes right up until this morning on it, so.
Okay, the, the changes that are being made, um, on the, on the, on the plans are being remaining, on the eighty percent, uh, open access plan, the current deductibles are a thousand for a, a individual and three thousand for a family, those would go up to fifteen-hundred and forty-five-hundred. And on the out-of-pocket, and I should back up, the deductible is the amount that the employee has to pay before they get into coinsurance. The out-of-pocket, which is the limit at which, once they reach the out-of-pocket level where their expenses that come out of their pocket currently reach two thousand for an individual or six thousand for a family, they're covered a hundred percent for the balance of the year, and the plan change would change that to three thousand for an individual and nine thousand for a family. Uh, the, uh, RX or prescription drug copays, there's a three-tier scenario, uh, tier one is remaining the same at fifteen dollars, tier two is going to increase from thirty to forty dollars for a thirty-day supply, tier three is going to increase from sixty to eighty dollars for a thirty-day supply, and there's an initial RX deductible, it's currently two hundred per individual, that will go to three hundred. Those are the main, the main changes that are being, being made.
Sounds like, um, although we're offering adequate insurance, doesn't seem like most of our employees are going to be able to afford it. Just saying.
Employees won't be able to afford it, Commissioner?
I mean, we're looking at the deductibles and, and increased copayments, I mean, that's, that's gonna be a pretty tough one, an employee making thirty-five thousand a year.
The, uh, the eighty percent open access plan is more of a copayment plan, so there's, the deductible, uh, kicks in in relatively few areas, because if you go into the hospital, you're still gonna pay a, a five-hundred-dollar copay. When you go to the doctor's office, you've got the, the standard copays that you pay there to cover the service, so your, your plan is more copay-oriented, but changing these deductibles and, and the out-of-pocket allows you to reduce the premiums. As, as Mr. Bonner said, initially, the, uh, increase was about sixteen-point-six percent. By making these plan changes, you've got the increase in premiums down in the three-point-nine percent range, so you can hold the premium levels the same or pass along a portion of it, but it's about a one-point-three, one-point-two, one-point-three million dollar savings in the premiums that would have to be, that come out of your, your pocket as the Commissioners for the county or out of the employees' pocket.
Well, Commissioner Holmes, you're right, if they hit those trigger points, it is going to cost more, but their premium, their actual contribution the board elects to pay for this could go down. You know, so we're, we, it was a balancing act, there's, there's never any, uh, perfect solution unless we pay for everything all the time, but it was the best solution that we came up with, and the committee looked at it, we certainly, uh, made changes to try to find the best coverage we could get.
So we, we have a couple of plans, can you go through the, the Kaiser numbers and, and what that will mean for an employee that, um, you know, is not that high on the, um, the salary bracket?
The, the Kaiser plan, uh, had a five-point-four percent increase, the plan benefit levels are staying the same. Those are the premiums that the employees pay for the Kaiser plan versus the, uh, the eighty percent open access, which is where the bulk of your people are at, are, are very similar. Kaiser is a, is two or three dollars cheaper than the, uh, than the, what the, um, eighty percent open access plan is.
Can you talk about deductibles with Kaiser, are there deductibles?
Uh, yes, there's a five-hundred-dollar deductible and, and fifteen-hundred for a family, so that one, that one stays the same.
Okay, what about copay for Kaiser?
Pardon?
Copay, any co, what, what?
Yes, there's a copay for the doctor's office, office visit.
Same.
It's a, it's, it's a little bit, a little bit cheaper.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have three questions. One is, uh, do we bid out, did our person department bid out for insurance brokerage service?
No, sir.
Do we have a contract for the brokers that's representing Henry County?
The only contract documents that, uh, allude, and I don't want to call them a contract document, it is a statement that the board authorized last year in the resolution, and I think it is, um, I don't think I better read it to you instead. It's in the document I gave you this morning, and it is part of the resolution where it designated who the broker would be. That's the most descriptive of all the documents that we have that identified our current vendors, and that's be the same position we are in now. Now, in, in talking, um, with the Commissioners and with the, the brokers, we have no problem asking the questions if the board wants to put it out to bid, or if we want a solicitation of qualifications, and to the, the credit of the vendors, they said they had no problem with it either. So, uh, the board hasn't, um, made any objections in the past...
So the Board hasn't made any objections in the past for this. The issue for me is I don't have a continuing arrangement that allows me to work with the brokers through the year. So I would suggest that I have a mechanism in place, whether it be a contract, I want something that will at least sustain me through not just getting the budget adopment, but things that I can use throughout the years. The vendors have been very helpful this year, I've had many questions in my five months and 30 days on the job, the clinic issues, we had claim issues, obviously, I was concerned about our experiential mods, so they've been available, but I don't know what the relationship should, how it should be redefined so that I have an ongoing relationship with the brokers. So I am going to suggest something along that line, whether it's a contract, whether it's an ongoing resolution from the Board, I'm not sure what is necessary, but I'll certainly work that out as we're going on. Today, my biggest issue was getting this resolution in place with the terms and conditions we have so that it doesn't affect our open enrollment, which is coming up in two weeks.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, if not, we have a resolution for the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve and adopt the Henry County Employee Benefit. Somebody move in that direction.
Let me get clarification. Lyndon, the option that we were looking at is Option One?
Yes, Option Two.
With the county paying the 100% of the increase?
I'm sorry?
Is the option that we were favoring, is that the one that you was favoring, Option One, with the 100%?
Oh, in terms of the Board's contribution?
Yes.
I would be recommending that the Board do pay the 529, I said 519 early, I'd recommend the Board absorb the 529102, and that's actually the fourth one down in the, we did it in reverse order. I wanted the Board to have the option to adopt none or 25%, 50%, 75% to 100%. Really, the question was, do you want to absorb the 1.8 million or with the options in place, did you want to absorb the 529? It is my recommendation, the Board and County Commissioners agree to pay that additional 529102.
What you're looking at is Option One, changes the deductibles and out-of-pocket. Option Two eliminates the two plans, so the 529 is inclusive of doing both Option One and Option Two.
So the motion we just need is to approve Option One, is that correct?
And to agree to pay the 529, the additional cost, employee cost that the bid in county.
I'd put a form of motion, Mr. Chairman, that we...
Option Two, the fingers that I'm getting, we've got both of them covered now.
Mr. Commissioner, I would recommend, if you look on the second page of the resolution, that you tell us which dollar amount of the Board's or the county's contribution you're approving, because they're not numbered. So if what you're approving is that the county would incur 529,102, I would recommend that you move to approve the resolution and select that option, the 529,000 dollar option.
Okay, I move to approve this resolution and to cover the cost of the 529102.
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, somebody second it. Have a motion on the floor, somebody second it.
Mr. Bonner, I think the rub here, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves on, you know, the chicken and the egg issue. I don't know what's happening with the budget quite yet, and I'm being asked to vote to put money into this, but I don't know what our budget is. So I'm being asked to make a decision that I'm not fully informed on, and I just don't like to do that.
That's my question to you, Lyndon, are we looking at fund balance for the total premium of 16 million, or are we looking at the general fund to pay the premium?
At this point in time, where we're in the budget process, which is the update I'll give you later this morning, we don't have the budget balance. The difference is that on the insurance plan, our choices were to pay 1.8 million with no changes, we could absorb that, or the 52930201. So in either case, if the Board elects not to do insurance, then all that goes away, but I don't think that was an option. So we've got the two best options we put in front of you and how we're going to pay for it, it's a part of the base budget. We are committed to getting this funded. Now, we are about one-fifth of the way through. As of yesterday, we finished getting all the information on the budget, I'll update some of this in our summary later this morning, but right now, it's the options that are there that we are going to have to pick one or the other. And Commissioner Prince, to address your issue, is the question whether you wanted the 1.8 or the 529 number on it. So it's going to be in the budget with the adoption of this program. And right about now, we're still just getting started on it, and I'm about 5 million dollars out of whack. We know the big steps we've got to take in terms of on the budget, it has been reduced down pretty substantial just since we started working on it Friday night and Saturday. So we're heading in the right direction, we just got a lot of heavy lifting with the line item review we did. Technically, we just finished Monday, and now everything's loaded in. Saturday, we started making some adjustments, we started looking at things that we could address, and in your summary, you'll see the steps we've taken throughout the calendar year up until April 1st. So I believe we can afford this, I believe it's the right thing to do, it's a necessary part of the budget. I don't think the options that were presented to us, I don't believe we have any better coverage that we could provide for any less dollars.
I have a question. Are you able to afford a District Two?
Lyndon, what's driving the, and it seems like, and I know you had mentioned to me in some conversations we've had about this, that you're hoping that in the coming years that we don't push this right into the budget like it seems like we do every year where we have open enrollment?
It's been a structure, yes, sir, and I appreciate you bringing it up. It's been a structure that you've had for years, but we pushed it back. February 15th is when we're going to get the data, we traditionally get towards the end of March. The current vendor has provided it a little bit earlier on it, so it does really shorten the amount of time that we can work through and get the alternatives and negotiate the changes.
So my question is, the reason this is an ASAP, as soon as possible, is because open enrollment, it starts next week?
I think it's the 20th.
A week and a half?
18th, I'm sorry.
I said it's, okay.
And in doing so, you know what that triggers, I really firm up everything we've got. Now, I will tell you that in the budget we have right now, all the vacancies and a lot of the changes, we've applied a higher insurance cost to them, just depending on the coverage that the individuals lick, it's the safer piece. Once that gets trued up, we expect our part to come down on that. But right now, we have to estimate the highest piece because of the compression of time that we're under, but we have addressed that, and the Commissioners and in talking, whether it's Mr. Gases and this consulting group or another group next year, we have to have this information much, much earlier in the budget cycle to avoid this. We've done it five years in a row, I'm not going to do it again. So we've made that arrangement, and any arrangements we do with a contractor is going to have to live with this data point. We said the absolute latest we want it is February 15th.
Well, with the understanding of how expedited that we need to get through the enrollment and so forth, I'll second the motion that's on the floor.
We have a second on the floor, any further discussion? District One?
Mr. Bonner, what percentage of claim rate did we have last year, 97, 98%?
It was high. Our experientials, I think for 11, or no, nine of the months that I recall were in excess. Let me check with, I'm getting a confirm from Mr. Gases that it was 98% experiential mods. And that's, you know, I can't get much higher.
Yeah, so that...
That drove our cost up, and we found that early on, that was pointed out to me in my Mr. Letter, that our, the amount of claims, which relates back to what our experiential mods would be, were escalating as time went on. Now, we had some big, big claims also. I mean, there are some unusual outliers in there that excuse the entire data, but it is what it is, the number is actually 98% of your premium.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
I'm just gonna make a comment, when I come on board in 13...
Yes, sir.
I asked that it be, Major Medical be bid out in-house, and I was told it was so far gone that we couldn't. So I was basically insured that in 14, it would be bid out. But anyway, to make a long story short, I was insured this year that it would be bid out, and we have evidence that says it was passed along. And then, and this has absolutely no respect for the brokers, absolutely no disrespect for the brokers. The deal was, dealing with many, many years of Major Medical for our employees, it is a highly bidable commodity, and it was back in the 70s and the 80s, and I think Commissioner Holmes can attest to this, because I would seek his advice, he is, I look at him as being an expert on issues of insurance, which he raised some significant valid questions. Him and I have the same thoughts about representing the employees, but they're on different avenues. Okay, the point that I'm making, that I would like to make, is I think that our, if our person's department can't bid this out, then somebody need to tell me that, I was told that we could. Okay, then I was told that it wouldn't be appropriate, basically, he would not feel comfortable doing this, but we could bid out for a brokerage service, which is a very competitive commodity. Then I found out, we in the same dilemma. So now, just, I'm gonna vote no for this, and I'm gonna tell you why. One is, I'm not so sure that the employee's getting the best deal. Number two is, I'm all for paying 100% of whatever it is, but I just don't, I just, we may be getting the best deal since white bread. But the deal is, I think we need, we owe it to our citizens, to taxpayers who's paying all this, to at least look it up, and I know they took 40 bids on this, but it's, it kind of, to me, it kind of looks like a captive audience, and we've got somebody that's not contracted, they probably provide an excellent service, but they're not contracted. So they're working for us, and kind of like last year was a single entity item to where we did approve that, just for that reason. So having said that, any more discussion with the Board?
If not, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
Is that coming out of general fund, or is it coming out of fund balance?
It will be out of general fund. Right now, I don't have the balance, so we're working it, we're holding it in general fund is what we pay it at. We wouldn't determine what comes out of fund balance until we got a balance and the Board determined they wanted to do those things that were extra. It's probably going to be more of your capital things that come out of fund balance. Right now, this is an operational change that we think has to be absorbed, the capitals, unfortunate for me, I hate to say it, I don't think they're optional either, but Board can prioritize those. So whether we fund that out of general fund or some other mechanism, right now, I'm saying this is funded out of general fund, and that's my intent to keep it there.
Any more questions? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign? So move.
That motion failed?
I don't think it did, I don't know who...
Three, three?
Three, three? Had a motion fail. So does anybody have a consequential motion?
Well, then, it will push us back, and the next time we're here, I'm afraid it'll cost more, because we'll have lost a couple of the pieces that were available to us in this turnaround. Now, we'll go to, have to push back open enrollment and go back and see what the vendors can provide for us, but I think it will be more expensive.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the Board?
Mr. Chairman, before you move on, I don't know if the clerk caught the votes, y'all moved quick, could we see the in favor of the motion hands again?
The what now?
Could we see the in favor of the motion hands again? I don't think the clerk...
You're talking about the raise of hands?
I don't think the clerk caught who voted which way.
Okay, I know one time I asked for a voice vote, and that wasn't too popular, so...
Well, just if we can see who voted which way, so the clerk can...
Okay, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand.
Okay, that's good enough, we know everybody else...
That leaves the last three, right?
That's right.
I said process elimination.
That's right, I know who voted against...
Unless somebody abstains, is anybody abstaining from voting?
Point of clarification, does that mean our employees will no longer have subsides of insurance?
Because we don't have...
That don't kick in till June the 1st.
I know, but starting June 2nd, does that mean we didn't improve in insurance?
I think we need to get on the ball and have a meeting and come up with a plan, because I don't see the employees being without Major Medical, I really don't.
What do you see is going to be the difference? We've assembled a plan, we've gone through the cost aspects, if there's something that we haven't addressed, I've got the right people here, I know you voted on it, but I've got the right people to answer every question here. I don't think the number's going to improve, my estimation is actually going to go the other way.
In the budget, I have no clue.
Right now, you're about 5.7 million dollars out of whack, meaning where revenue's exceeding, with no capital costs, but the insurance captured and several other pieces of it.
5 million dollars out of whack, but you want me to vote on 16 million? So, I mean, that's, you know...
Well, also, what I said earlier, that we're at the beginning of the process where we're adjusting our budgets going down. I will present the balanced budget alternatives, and then at some point, the Board will have to take a look at what your costs are for all your programs. But this is also the compression problem, you had this problem last year, you had it the year before and the year before that, hence the reason I'm backing this up so we don't cross this again. If you're asking me, which you weren't, the question about what are we going to put in the budget, we're saying this is funded, we're going to work for this, and this was the best alternative. Anything above this, now, I'm afraid our costs get much more expensive.
But in the past, we've pulled the money out of fund balance, so when you say it's coming out of general fund, I just need to see what that looks like.
So just a point of clarification, we're all in agreement, we want to provide insurance for our employees, I would assume that's an agreement. So now, it's a question of how much do we fund it? And I completely understand the concern about making sure the budget makes sense, but I just want to make sure I clarify that what we were, what the motion that was on the floor that was voted on, was that we, any price increases on the premium, the monthly premium, the Commissioners were going to absorb that 500,000 dollar price increase. We can, I mean, there's a very possible, if y'all want to have the motion, to just ensure we have insurance for our employees, we could say that we're not going to increase, we're just going to pay exactly what we did last year, and 100% of the increase will just roll through to the employees. I mean, I don't think that's the intent of what the Board wants, but that's kind of, because if we don't vote on insurance today, we have some issues with the employees having insurance, because you don't go bid out 42 vendors in a week. I mean, you just can't do it, these things have to be, you have to put in deductibles, you have to put in what copays are, I mean, there's a mountain of paperwork that goes through, and I think that if we just flippantly move on, it doesn't put in the months of preparation, it kind of just minimizes that effort.
Commissioners, there's one thing to address what Commissioner Holmes brought up, bear in mind that in the current budget, where it is, we've already funded for the current level. The only additional dollars, it's Commissioner Preston you were bringing out, is the 529. It's budgeted at the previous level we had, so the increase is all we're looking at, and the increase was suggested, could it be passed on the employees? It could, and that increase would have been the 1.8 million or the 529. So the second part of this is, Commissioner Holmes, it is captured in our operational side of admin. It won't be a part, because it's an ongoing cost, I wouldn't recommend an ongoing cost be taken out of fund balance. So the only increase, sir, is just the 529, that's what I'm looking for.
Let me ask you this, that we got two weeks from now, exactly two weeks, we're gonna have another meeting. So if time is of essence, why didn't we have this two weeks ago? I'm just saying, what would two weeks hurt? In that way, it'd give all of us a time to go to some budget workshops and get a briefing.
Because the enrollment was the 18th, and our meeting's what, the 15th, and they have to print packages and all the enrollment materials for the people?
In all fairness, Board, I was going to present this to you last meeting, but remember, the hour got late, and I did advise you at that meeting that today is the meeting we had to have a vote on this, and were there any questions from what we've got to?
It caused a time element, we over a barrel.
Well, it is, and you've been that way, been positioned that way for a number of years. The good news is, we're not going to do this again.
Okay, well, I'm not changing, I'm gonna give that more thought, so. We have a question.
Did we last year do the same thing, we approved the insurance before we approved the budget?
Yes, sir, because of the time, you've done it a number of years, that, and this is the argument I'm making, I don't want to keep doing that again, I'd rather y'all be further into your budget so that we know what our costs are. But in either case, learning what your true cost would be based off your experiential is the key to it. Not getting it in late March, but getting it in early February is the key for us to have time to incorporate in budget and take all the steps necessary to see what your budget was. budget would be, exactly what you're asking for. But this is the time constraints that the, the, the current structure has yielded, these are the cards I'm dealt, and so I have to manage that, and I am. So my recommendation remains the same. I know y'all voted on it, I will ask y'all to reconsider it, because it is a, um, an important piece of our business.
Let me, let me reminisce about the, the budget. The last three years, the budget, uh, has to be approved, uh, before, um, or after the insurance. Okay? What we've done the last three years, the last three budgets were balanced using fund balance. Okay? When the, when the, when the board comes, comes up here and determines the budget, then they, any, uh, overage, they merely fund it with fund balance. The fund balance is the catch-all to balance the budget. Now, when it comes up, the averlorum tax, okay? Averlorum tax, you got the insurance comes before the budget, the budget comes before the averlorum tax. So it's kind of a catch-twenty-two in, in all three of these. So in order to balance the budget, uh, in the last three years, and I don't know prior to that, they have to take fund balance, it might be three million, five million, last year I think it was six million, to balance it. Then, when they start assessing that, the averlorum for the BLC side, that's when, like last year, they said we're gonna, uh, uh, the millage will generate the, uh, almost exact amount that was taken out of fund balance to balance the budget. So that answers his question, that I would say in the last three years, every budget was balanced initially, using fund balance, so, um.
I'd like to ask a question.
'Cause I think you're voting on a couple of things. Questions to Mr. Bonner, but I'd like to ask it while, while we are in this meeting. Renewal is June first. You don't do anything. Now, I think y'all are voting on whether you're gonna pay the increase or not, 'cause you don't know what the budget's gonna be. The other issue is, are you gonna change to save the million dollars and go to Blue Cross with the staff's recommendations? If you don't do that, then come June first, you're staying with Cigna. Okay? So you're gonna have the larger increase, and it's, you know, you're gonna be spending seventy, eighty thousand dollars a month extra. So my question, are you, you know, we voting to, whether you pay fifty, twenty-five, whatever, doesn't concern us. We gotta tell the insurance company something. So the staff recommends to change to Blue Cross with a, with a million dollar savings is one issue. Who's gonna pay the savings is another issue. Now, when the, when the enrollment team sits down with employees, they gotta know, how much is it gonna cost me? That starts the eighteenth. So that's the issue.
Increase, but I just need to know what the budget is gonna look like, because if we're putting the sixteen million dollars in the general fund, that means we're not funding sixteen million dollars worth of something else, and I don't know what it looks like, 'cause I haven't seen the budget. So that is, um, that's my main concern. I need to see where the money is, what's gonna be cut out of the general fund to replace it with these, with these, with this premium.
And, and that's not different than, same position you were in last year?
Yeah. Last year, we knew it was coming out of fund balance. You're saying it's, it's coming out of general fund, so.
Well, if it makes any difference, then I'll say we'll take it out of fund balance, but not to be, you know, flippant about it, I, it's an operational cost that's been absorbed, meaning our premium costs for insurance have been absorbed by fund balance. At the year end, if you do an adjustment, and that's where it is right now, even your last year's year-end adjustment, it's in fund balance, because you changed at the, one of your budget hearings to adjust the rollback rate to absorb several of these things, and there were, there was a list of them. But at the time of it is, it's still in fund balance. So I think my, my overall, is I'm saying it will be funded with fund balance. And as a philosophy, I generally try not to fund ongoing expenditures with one-time cash as a fund balance. But y'all had to do that, because you didn't have the millage before you to get that adopted. So it's the, the catch-twenty-two. I just don't wanna do anything adverse that would cause our costs to increase, and further put me out of, uh, balance with a, a budget that I have before you. We've done our work, we think we've got a good plan before you. And, uh, the only thing I'll close with that is, I'm sorry.
Why don't we do this? We, we got, uh, I won't be available next week, but.
I, I'm, I'm making a motion to approve the, the change of vendors, and then we can work on in the next meeting, the funding. Does that work through the enrollment of, does that fix it, if I made that motion?
The only decision you'd have then is how much you want to absorb of it, either the five twenty-nine, that's the only.
Because you're worried about some of these bids expiring, and then we have to go through on these forty vendors, we lose out on some of the timing of that.
Well, the only one that we would have, even anywhere close, would be your current vendor, Cigna, and that would, their new prices would kick in, and that's substantially higher. So it's a, it's a rock in a hard place, but commissioners, this one's not as difficult as, for me, as it seems. I'm gonna fund the insurance.
We could go forward with everything, the only thing would be left was, when you sit down with the employees, you gotta be able to tell them how much you're gonna pay. We're gonna print the materials, if we had to print them and, and bring them at the last minute. You, you don't have to decide today, I don't guess, but, but it pushes things back. Somebody's gotta, you know, we either gonna stay with Cigna, or go to Blue Cross, that's one of the things. The other thing is, who's gonna pay for, for the increase? That needs to be separated.
Briefing for the benefit of Mr. Holmes and others, this after, after we get through this meeting. Okay? We got two weeks. So the deal is, if you table it, it's not the end of the world, and I, I think the board could, uh, have a call meeting between now and the eighteenth, and go, go up or down. I, I know we're not gonna bid it out, I already know that. I'm, this ain't my first rodeo. I know you can't bid it out in, in two weeks, but, uh, I just wanna make a point that it's, um, I think we owe it to the, number one, the taxpayers, number two is the, uh, employees to, to get a check and balance, and let them know, uh, that this is the best deal. I'm not convinced it is.
Well, we, we bid this out to multiple companies. In fact, two of the major carriers in the country looked at your claims and wouldn't bid. United Healthcare and Humana said, we're not even interested. That puts it down, Kaiser's already here, puts it down to Cigna and Blue Cross and Aetna. Aetna wanted a thirty-eight or thirty-nine percent increase. That got it down to Cigna and Blue Cross. We went round and round, and back and forth, and did the best negotiating I know how to do, and I've been negotiating forty years. So as far as having the best rates for what you're getting in, in the industry, Blue Cross came through with it, and, and at three point nine percent, that's not much of an increase.
And so if, if the board does authorize the change to the plans, we'll try to retain those two plans, then the only question will come back for the board, you wanna spend the million eight, or the five twenty-nine?
Okay.
Or what part of it?
We, we get in the cart before the horse. We have a motion, and I'm not familiar, I, I, I can't remember. Motion at District Two. Can you recite your motion again?
Well, I didn't fully make, 'cause I was asking the question, if I made the motion, would this, there's no motion on the floor. The question I have, though, is, 'cause it sounds like we have a budget workshop after this. Why don't we go into the budget workshop, and we table this temporarily to come back into session before we adjourn, adjourn, talk about, 'cause I, I'll tell you the thing I'm concerned about, is a lot of our employees, not only do citizens watch this, but our employees, and morale is one of those things. I mean, you have your compensation that comes from your wages, but you also have your employee benefits, and those things make up your complete package that you, you weigh what we value our employees from. And I just, I worry, 'cause there's nothing wrong with having concern about the budget. I think we all, every one of the commissioners has a valid concern to be thoughtful, and be very aware of where we are with how we're going to fund, fund things. But I don't want this meeting to close out, and our employees to go, oh my goodness, our county commissioners just let that meeting go through with no insurance flowing through on the renewal. I think that sends a, a bad message. And, and that's something I would, I would like us to consider, is that something that we can work through during this, this work session, after, this mean, when we retire into, and then come back into the open session, and revisit this topic?
I'm, I'm fine with that, but understand that the summary, which we were gonna do two weeks ago, is really, we're only better off making the adjustments we made Friday night, and Saturday, and Sunday. So this is the first time we've had to start working on the budget. My commitment to you is, this is one we're gonna fund, uh, in the insurance line of it. So if it would help the board to see where we're at, in, just in a summary form, if that would help it, it'd be, I'm, I'm thinking we could come back and address it, but I believe you got a motion and a second that was on the floor, whether it was recorded right or not, and it was a three, three, and as I appreciate it, that makes the motion die. So I think we'd have to rescind that to come back, if that would be what the board's pleasure is. I'm open to anything, but the summary report I'm gonna give you, I think I've told all of y'all, it's about fifteen minutes long. I just want you to know where I'm at, when we got started on it on Friday, to start making the adjustments. The only thing we've received is the best thinking of all the department heads, and that adds up to a huge number. Now, we're starting to go back, we've had to negotiate some things with public safety, and I think you're aware of a couple of the pieces we, uh, have been determined to be essential there. We've done the bracket increases for the employees. So you've got some things to look at, but, and we still have lots to do on the administrative side, to align the budget with the most likely resources we're gonna get. So if we wanna come back afterwards, I still think you have to rescind this one, or you can vote on that one. Essentially, it's two things. Will you change to the recommended vendor, and are we going to absorb what part of the five twenty-nine? That's really what this two pieces are.
Somebody wanna move, we table this, e- even though it might be reheard today, just table it till further advice?
I'll make that motion, that we ta- table this until we come back from our, our work session this afternoon.
Okay. We have a motion?
And I, and I'll second that. And I do want the employees to know, it is my intent to pay the full amount, but I haven't even seen the budget. So I, I really, I'm making an uninformed decision, and, and I don't like that. So I, I just want an opportunity to see the budget, and, and it is my intent to get this done today, and, and I like that, um, idea of coming back today. I just need an opportunity to look at the budget for just a few minutes.
Well, what you're getting today is the five-year plan, and a summary of where we are at. It's a single-page document to tell you where I'm at, and what we've done thus far, and then the second page is the changes we've made to account for it. There's still lots of water over the bridge that's gotta happen.
Well, that's two more pages of information than I have right now.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm gonna second that motion.
Nevermind. Second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, table. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution proven in part, and denied in part, the request of Dolphin Trading Incorporated for a refund of occupational taxes. Mr. Jock Statter.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Board, you'll remember in January, we conducted a public hearing on a request by Dolphin Trading for a refund of their oc- of a portion of their occupational tax. They refund, they requested a refund of their two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, and two thousand thirteen occupational tax, based on the fact that their revenues were derived from the sale of goods to out-of-state residents. And as it turns out, as I investigated this, that is in fact the source of their revenue, and it is in fact exempt from the imposition of the, um, the occupational taxes. However, they did not request a refund in time for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. State law allows you to request a refund if you make that request within three years of the date the tax is paid. The only request that was timely made is a request for two thousand thirteen. I would, I would recommend the board approve the two thousand thirteen request, deny the two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve requests. And I believe the total amount of that refund would be eight thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars, I believe was given.
Anybody got any questions?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Two. Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. So move. Uh, the next item, which is shown on the agenda, has been taken off, uh, March fifteenth, twenty sixteen.
There was one, there was one item on, that was on there, he skipped one.
Which one? Oh, you're talking about the public health. I already scratched it off. You're not through with that? I apologize, and I will revert back to, uh, Item B, public hearing. An ordinance adopting Chapter five eleven dash three dash six of the rules of the State of Georgia Department of Health, repeating ordinance and resolution and conflict therewith.
Mr. Chairman, as, as you're aware, the State Department of Health adopts rules and regulations on a regular basis, which the county is required to then adopt in order to allow us to enforce those rules and regulations. They have adopted a new Chapter five eleven, which essentially contains, I would guess, most, if not all, of the regulations that we've already adopted, that were previously in Chapter, I think, two ninety of the code. They've renumbered them all, they've placed them all under Chapter five eleven, and they've added some new regulations about the portable septic systems, which I guess are like the Portalets, and the Porta Johns, and businesses that operate those. And we would request, Your Honor, that you adopt the entirety of Rule Chapter, of Chapter five eleven of the Rules of the Department of Health, to make those part of our ordinances, so we can enforce those through code enforcement.
Anybody have any questions for council? If not, uh, this, uh, requires a public hearing. Uh, this just takes one reading, is that correct?
That's, that's all it requires.
Okay. Public hearing, uh, I'm gonna open the floor up for anybody to make public comments about this ordinance adoption, Chapter five one-one dash three dash six of the Rules of the State of Georgia. If anybody has any comments, concerns, uh, uh, come to the podium, state your name.
And Mr. Chairman, if you would, I've put on the overhead a revision to the ordinance that was provided in your books. We're actually gonna adopt the entire Chapter eleven, Chapter five eleven, not just five eleven, three, six.
Okay. The, the total chapter, five eleven. In mine, it says five eleven dash three dash six, but.
That's right, and there's a, I've revised, and revised one is on the overhead, and I'll provide you the revision.
Does anybody like to be heard at this time, make comments? If not, I, I declare that the public hearing requirement has been met, so I will seek, uh, a motion from the council to approve the ordinance as amended, because it's different than what's in, in, on the agenda.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Four? Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Seeing nothing beyond that, other than the fact that when I scratched the one below that, I scratched the one above it, too. Uh, but anyway, I apologize for that. Approval of the minutes, March fifteenth, twenty sixteen. Does somebody move, we approve, is published?
So move.
Have a motion District Three? Second, Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Uh, Chairman, Commission, comments? Chairman has no comments? I'm, I think I started with District Five last time, I'm gonna start with District Four.
No comments, Chairman.
District One.
I do. I have a question for Mr. Bonner. I appreciate if you give us an update on the clinic, please.
Um, right now, the, um, clinic personnel, the previous contractor, I think, is moving stuff out of it. Uh, we have, um, trying to make certain that the inventories have been made, the things that the county paid for, uh, and the condition of the buildings was moved out. Now, that's the current vendor. We've sent some folks out to take a look at some other clinic options. In the current budget, we have, um, about five hundred thousand dollars standing on it, to try to come back with a clinic partnership that the board committed to some time back. The interesting part that keeps coming up, I haven't found the empirical evidence that would support what the marketing that was sold to the board before. We don't know that it's actually gonna decrease your costs or your experientials. know that it's actually going to decrease your costs or your experientials. I haven't found one that does that, but I have found one that has services which may be beneficial, um, in that direction. But when we looked at the proposal that was put before the board and what the board acted upon, it doesn't appear that I, I haven't yet, and bear in mind, it's been limited, but I've gone out on the web and tried to find where similar clinic operations, meaning a county-sponsored, reduce cost. And I've, I've asked our consultants, I've asked around personal knowledge and my little research, I've not been able to find that thing that says that it actually reduces your costs. So, in that regard, had we done it, then the previous year, your cost would have been at least seven hundred and fifty thousand if you used all your budgeted dollars for it. Right now, we're, because of all the work that's been done, the, the condition of the clinic, if we can modify it and find something that would be beneficial to the employees within the five hundred thousand, we've got five hundred thousand in budget now to keep researching and try to get the clinic open. We have a good facility, as it seems to be at the right location. It's just the arrangements that we were into before were egregious, in my mind, to the service that we were going to provide, and I did not think that that was a, a contract that I, that I wanted y'all to enter into. So, I am trying to find a vendor. I've sent out the HR folks. They've gone with some contractors. They've done some independent research, going to look at other clinics that offer the services that we think the, the, our employees deserve and want. So, that's the status of it right now. My intent is to still provide unless the bud, unless the board takes it out of the budget.
That completes yours?
Yes.
I yield for District Three?
No comments.
District Two?
I'm good right now.
District Five?
Yeah, I, I have a question myself. Um, it's that time of year, um, where our right-of-ways need to be maintained. I know in the past, we, um, we asked for plan, what the plan was, uh, from the county manager and DOT on how we're going to keep those right-of-ways maintained, how we're going to keep garbage out the, the middle of our streets, um, for our primary commercial, uh, commercial corridors. So, if you can address that, County Manager, that'd be great.
Well, we've not reinvented anything, but we're going to have to take a look at how community services are functioning, the equipment they have and at, the actual routing of it. What we have discovered is that one thing about maintaining right-of-ways, you want it picked up before it's mowed, because if you go to in reverse order, then the litter is just litterized, and it makes it worse. So, there's going to be some coordination that's going to be required so that the community service pickup crew goes, not, not three days. We've got to have it the day before the plant's mowing. So, that's the, the only operational pieces that I've tried, and I've found so far this might improve this year's conditioning. But we're going to have to stay on top of it. It, it is exactly what you're saying. We're getting more litter this year than we got last year. I expect the grass to grow because we've had a lot more rain this year so far. So, the plan in terms of the only thing I've done thus far, Commissioner Holmes, is to try to coordinate the mowing with the pickup so that they're done in the right order, and I don't make the problem worse.
You know, grass is starting to grow in my district, and I'm, and as I drive down here, I see, you know, it's getting pretty high in all the districts. Um, so, I haven't seen a mower out yet, so I don't know if you can address that, because, um, that's the number one concern of citizens during this time of year, and we de- we desperately need a ha- need to have a plan in place, um, to keep our, um, our primary commercial corridors maintained.
My hope would be that I could provide you the schedule such that, you know, on the, the first week of blank, we're in this area, or second week of blank, we're in this area. But the rotation is, um, one thing we haven't mapped out yet. So, still coordinating that part, and I'll certainly provide that to you.
Okay. Can you give me the timeline so I can, uh, let my constituents know when they can expect to see the mowers in, in all of our commercial corridors in the northern part of the county?
For District Five?
Yeah. So, I need to let my citizens know.
I don't know it off, I don't have a plan off the top of my head, but I'll see if I can't work on that and try to get you something for Friday, when we can start looking at just county-wide about what districts would go where.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, County Manager, have any comments other than active shooter updates?
I think I got a couple of things. Uh, first, we'll get Mr. Ash to do the active shooter update, uh, because that's the one that's most pressing on our calendar. I am pleased of how this is really shaped up. It's a far more comprehensive program than I think that we started out to, uh, present, and I believe it's covering a lot of issues that Henry County and our region needs to address. Uh, the, one update is that the board's credentials for that day, uh, Mrs. Weaver will have later in the week, and we will, you will have to have them to get on Henry Parkway or the connector. Uh, we're closing this road up for that, for the obvious reasons of safety. We're going to be moving across the street. This is a live, um, very realistic part of it. So, it's important we look at safety first. Mr. Ash, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, gentlemen. Again, good morning again, Mr. Chairman. Um, the active shooter program, it's centered around, um, probably one of the worst-case scenarios we ever want to think about in the workplace, but history and time has showed us we need to be very concerned about this. Um, we started the process as early as October of two thousand fifteen with the planning phases of this project. And let me tell you, it's, it's very important to make sure I mention this, that this has involved every element of our public safety, from our nine-one-one to all our cities, our sheriff department, our law enforcements, our fire and EMS and the city fire departments. So, we've been, uh, engaged in this project since October. Our first meeting actually took place in November. But the goal of active shooter plan, program is to, um, educate, to plan for events, not just an active shooter, but any disaster event that may affect this facility or any county facility, to educate our employees and staff, to inform the public related to information of operation of our government, and it's to protect our employees and our staff for any events. The process we've undertaken began as early as November of two thousand fifteen, twenty fifteen, with our first design team meeting. Um, our da- design team is made up of our risk management, our executive letter management team from the county, all our public safety heads, and outside stakeholders. All our county public safety agencies will be involved, as well as our risk management. Um, we have provided active shooter training to most of our employees through our law enforcement, and additionally, we've given them online training through FEMA for active shooters. We had our first large-scale event as the tabletop exercise on March eighth of two thousand fifteen, and we had a hundred percent participation from every stakeholder in our government. Our full-scale exercise will take place a week from tomorrow, on Mar- April the twelfth, and it should start around eight, and we should be concluded at noon, and it will involve this building. Um, we've involved all our responders. We've have forty-plus volunteers. We have professional evaluators throughout the region to come and make sure that, um, we're practicing those plans we put in place for, um, the safety and protection of our citizens, I'm sorry, our employees. Um, the exercise should be completed by noon on the twelfth, and we'll complete it here with a hot wash, and thirty days after that, we'll come back before, to you guys, with, um, after-action report and show how we can improve the things we've done. That's the process we've undertaken. Um, as emergency manager, I've been the lead, one of my staff members, Jeremy Head is the exercise director, um, Chief McConnell, Lieutenant Lee, um, Lieutenant Cody, um, and just throughout our agencies and our public safety agencies have really built into this, um, project and this program. And not only doing this project and this program, this is a springboard of how we will exercise our, um, emergency management, our public safety, and our stakeholders from this point forward. I'll take any questions y'all have for me this morning.
I don't have any questions. Uh, several weeks ago, I, I, I can't remember who did all this, but they was having a, an active shooter drill. If I'm not mistaken, then they, they had a real person show up, and a police officer got killed in that process.
I believe that was a city in Virginia, the Greyhound station. They were actually having a live drill, and an active shooter incident took place. Um, at that point, I believe a Virginia state trooper was killed in that incident.
I think it somewhat got confusing because everything was fake, and it was a drill, and then all of a sudden, I don't think they had the impact. Somebody started shooting, and they, I think a lot of people thought that was part of the drill. I'm just saying that, but it, it's unfortunate. But I know that since we learned from that, when we have this active drill here, we will, uh...
Absolutely.
Be aware of that.
One of, one of the things we make sure of is for these drills and exercises, we have a well-thought-to, through safety plan credentialing. Um, the county manager just alluded that you guys would have to be credentialed as well. So, everyone has to be credentialed. We have a safe area where we clear all our weapons, and, um, we've advised every stakeholder. I think we've taken every precaution and everything leading to, to provide for the safety of the citizen, employees, and, um, staff involved in the drill.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Mr. Manager, have anything else?
I do. Uh, first, I've got to do a hat-s off to, uh, Tim Coley and Mr. Jim Joyce. If the board wasn't out there and saw the Vietnam commemorative celebration, uh, last week, it was an extraordinary event. Um, I saw a lot of teary eyes. I saw a lot of people hugging, and it was just that the weather was Chamber of Commerce-type weather. It was gorgeous. The message was good. It was well-coordinated. The place looked great. So, hats off to Mr. Coley and his crew, and in particular, Jim Joyce. Um, I hope that they do it again, and we hope that we can partner with them to make this an annual event for the period it stays out there. Um, we have made an offer, and it's been accepted. We have a new HR director will be on board April twenty-fifth. Uh, I'm going to have a reception that morning for her. Hope the board members will come by. I was light snacks and HR. And later in the afternoon, I'll introduce her to the, um, entire staff. I'm planning a staff meeting in the afternoon on that. My last update is Commissioners, as you're aware, we've been working on the, uh, what Mr. Floyd calls the back-room issues, and we've euphemistically used the terms ERP and public safety about the money that we've set aside to invest in our software updates on it. The public safety side had its first presentation from one of the vendors last week, and, um, went pretty well. They told their story, and now we've got the second most likely vendor to come in, and we'll actually, like the first one, try to address some of the issues that the individuals and across the departments are using. So, the public safeties are being taken care of. The next one will be the ERP solutions. We expect those to be, um, wound up in the next, I think, by the end of May, I believe, is when they are done. Uh, then we'll start looking at, coming back to you with recommendations for vendor selection and moving the project forward. And that's all I have unless the board has anything for me.
Any board members have anything for the, yes, I yield for District Four?
Just fixing my hair.
I'm sorry, he was, he was... He bid at three hundred and fifty dollars. During the bid cycle, you can't make movements. Let's move down to the county attorney update, the board on commissioners, on notification received from the City of Hampton regarding annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you may be aware, the City of Hampton informed us of their intent, intent to annex property into the city limits of the City of Stockbridge. Their annexation will consist of seventeen-point-six-four acres of land. It's owned by a company called Southern States LLC, which I believe, um, manufactures electrical-type equipment. Um, it's two parcels, one of which is a warehouse, the other is vacant land. There is no plan to rezone the property. They, they didn't notify us of a rezoning, which they'd be required to do if the property was to be rezoned. And I have confirmed it does meet all of the contiguity requirements for an annexation. There's no action the board needs to take. I'm just informing the board that's what hap- that's what's going on with that annexation.
You're saying in your opinion, it is, you, you reviewed it, and all the land is contiguous, and it's...
They, they have sufficient contiguity. They, it's, they have to have fifty feet of contiguity. They've got a couple of hundred feet of contiguity.
Okay, thank you. They've come in meetings and events, April the nineteenth at six-thirty PM is a regular meeting, and May the third, nine AM is a regular meeting. Does somebody move we go into executive session for the purpose of...
Litigation and, uh, real estate acquisition.
Okay, we have any personnel matters? None, okay. Does somebody move, uh, to go into executive session with Vice of Council for those applicable things?
So, move.
Have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, let me, just for the benefit of the audience, we're going to go into executive session. How long that would be, I don't, I hope it ain't long. We're going to come back out, and we're going, uh, reconvene in this room, then, then I'm, we're going go to Conference Room B, and you're obviously welcome to be there, come there, and have a seat, and, uh, get a briefing along with us from, from staff. So, what do we do? We voted, right? Okay. I want to make sure everybody's looking at me.